You're over here. I mixed it up on you again. Are we, I thought we were using those chairs over there for our... Line them up in the back wall? No, they're not gonna, they're just going off sound. But they're go, when they're interpreting, they're going to have their masks off so that viewers can see their lips. So, but that'll be the only time. Good evening, everyone. Like to call the school board meeting to order. If you'd all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll get started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nikki, would you please call roll?
Ms. Davis. Ms. Hill. Ms. Copper.
Here.
Mr. Schindler.
Here.
Dr. C. Ortino.
Here.
Mr. Seltzer.
Here.
Mr. Todd.
I am here. Let's see, we have no closed session this evening. And we will move right into our 7.0 additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda. Those include 7.01, addendum to agenda item 11.04, approval of personnel items, and 7.02, addition of agenda item 11.19, approval of early childhood demographic study modification. Next up, we will go right to public comments. During this time that we provide an opportunity at meetings for citizen comments in an effort to maintain an open and respectful dialogue with our community. The public comment session is not the appropriate forum for addressing individually identifiable student and/or personnel matters. Therefore, due to privacy laws protecting students and employees, comments about these matters should not include any personable, personally identifiable information about particular students or employees. Members of the public, staff, and students are encouraged to utilize established policies and procedures for offering suggestions or addressing concerns and complaints prior to bringing the issue before the board. Please be mindful that the meetings of the board include your statements at the podium. They are broadcast and you are responsible for any public comments you make. In lieu of a public statement, you may choose to submit your comments to the board in writing. Also, due to time constraints and the need to complete the primary responsibilities of our meeting agenda, we cannot respond during the meeting. So you will receive a response from us in writing. We are always available to have an open dialogue outside of our meetings and can be reached by email or phone using the contact information on the Parkway website. Tonight, we have about a dozen and a half people signed up to speak. So we are going to have to cap our time for comments at two minutes. I will call on speakers in the order that you have signed up. And then if you will, when you reach the podium, if you could just let us know your name, your relationship to Parkway or affiliation with Parkway, and then your two minutes will begin. And then I will try and, try and give you a heads up as to who's in the queue. So I'll announce the first few names and then you can be ready to follow the person in front of you. So first up, we have Jacob Lionfields. Following him will be Brian DeBosch and Suresh Peranjothi.
Hello. My name is Jake and I'm here representing the grassroots group of hundreds of Parkway community members who have been calling for transparency and accountability related to Parkway's School Resource Officer Program. I'm here just as an individual because of COVID-related concerns, we only wanted to send one representative. Folks may be aware that there is an ongoing program review of the district's SRO program, with results from that program review slated to be released this fall. We've criticized this program review for multiple reasons, including its lack of independence and transparency. However, this evening, we are simply wanting to respond to a common misconception about SROs. That misconception is that SROs can deter or otherwise mitigate the harm of mass shootings. The belief that the presence of SROs can prevent or minimize the harm of mass shootings is widespread, but there is unfortunately a lack of evidence to support this. To begin with, The Washington Post in 2018 analyzed 19 years of data on school shootings and found that out of 225 incidents of gun violence on school campuses, only two were stopped by an SRO. That's less than 1%. Shooters were three times more likely to be thwarted by a weapons malfunction or their own inability or incompetence in using their gun. Additionally, a study by the Texas State University and the FBI jointly examined over 160 incidents of school violence, including 25 school shootings. The study found that none of the school shootings were ended by armed SROs returning fire. Given this research and the lack of evidence that SROs prevent or mitigate the harm of mass shootings, we call on members of the Parkway School Board of Education to ensure that their public comments about the benefits and drawbacks of the SRO program are grounded in evidence. SROs may have benefits to the Parkway community, but it is clear that preventing or mitigating the harm of mass shootings is not one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Brian DeBosch.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Brian DeBosch and I'm a parent of two children, elementary and middle school age, who love attending school in this district. I'm also a pediatrician who practices at Washington University Children's Hospital. I've thus witnessed firsthand the effects of COVID-19 on our children. This includes both previously healthy children and those with underlying comorbidities. On that backdrop, I thank the administration and the Board of Education for prioritizing both the safety and the in-person participation and social interactions of each one of our students, mine included. Being in person safely for educators, kids, and their families, I believe, is our common and unified goal across this district. As you know, last year saw amazing teamwork by our teachers, students, principals, and parents to go in person. As a result of appropriate distancing measures last year and adherence to those measures, we witnessed a largely successful campaign with surprising control over exposure, quarantine, and illness. This meant that our kids were learning in school. It also meant that parents could work at their own jobs. I believe that we can continue this work together and see this through. We are not yet out of the woods. Our hospitals are clearly seeing increased transmission and consequences of the Delta variant in children and adults. Certainly, as the data change, so may our practices. But as it stands today, continued distancing measures like masking, distancing, ventilation, and vaccination will allow safe and quick return to school for as long as possible. Kids are resilient, quick to learn and adapt. They showed us this last year. Thank you for helping this community continue on the path we started together. It is my hope that we can continue to work together to keep everyone in school and everyone at work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Suresh Peranjothi. He'll be followed by Stephen Liang and Joseph Bradley.
My name is Suresh Peranjothi and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm a Parkway parent and a physician. I'm an adult pulmonologist and over the past 17 months, my group and I have taken care of hundreds of hospitalized patients with COVID infection. In my specialty, I am asked to see patients that worsen despite initial therapy. After a demanding and difficult year in about May of this year, healthcare workers in St. Louis were relieved when the overall prevalence of COVID in our community improved. Case numbers were relatively low and steady. However, hospitalized cases have increased exponentially. In my hospital alone, we've gone from a census of about 10 to 60 in about three weeks. These numbers are rising and projections suggest that the worst is yet to come. Patients that I see today are different than the ones I saw prior year. Patients are younger, people that you would otherwise think are healthy. I've seen patients in their twenties and forties instead of seventies and eighties. I've seen pregnant patients. My own experience is similar in that the majority of these patients are unvaccinated. But I have seen, and the important point is, several vaccinated patients. The Delta variant is clearly more contagious. It's yet to be seen if it's more virulent, but in my own experience, the acute of illness in these patients is much higher than they were even a few months ago. I've seen a vaccinated grandparent develop COVID infection when exposed to an unvaccinated grandchild in their household. The one common denominator in all the vaccinated patients I've seen is they've been in an indoor setting without masks in a setting where they felt that they were safe. The impact on children itself should not be trivialized, but placing children in classrooms where masks are not mandated, where the majority are unvaccinated, and in the case of those under 12 are not vaccinated, not only places them at risk, but places their parents and grandparents at risk, even if they are vaccinated. This is something that I've definitely seen. Everyone's goal is to keep students in school all year and protect our students and the families they go home to. I do support Parkway's mandate. It's the best way to achieve this goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Stephen Liang.
Hello. My name is Steve Liang. I'm an infectious disease physician and emergency physician at Barnshue Church Hospital, Washington University. It's a privilege to be here to share some of our diverse perspectives. SARS-CoV-2, the virus that causes COVID-19, has obviously demonstrated its capacity to change over time through mutation. That is the natural course of viruses. The Delta variant is more contagious than any of the previous strains that we've seen. It's two times, at least two times, more transmissible. Delta does not discriminate by age. It does, however, pose its greatest risk to those who are vulnerable and unvaccinated. While a fraction of children with Delta will develop severe COVID-19 requiring hospitalization, even a mild or asymptomatic infection is an opportunity for a variant to replicate and spread from person to person, perhaps to someone less fortunate. Protecting our kids and adults from getting infected in the first place is critical to reducing the spread of variants in COVID-19 and, more importantly, keeping our kids in school, which I think is where we all want our kids these days. Thank you for all that you do to create a safe and exceptional learning environment for all of our children.
Thank you. Next up, we have Joseph Bradley. He'll be followed by Amanda Heideman, Lisa Ryan, and Kim Midiksov.
Good evening and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address you all this evening in support of the temporary masking requirements. My name is Dr. Joseph Bradley and I'm the proud father of two students at Ren Hallow Elementary School. I'm an assistant professor of otolaryngology head of neck surgery at Washington University School of Medicine. I do have extensive experience when it comes to masking and in taking care of patients with COVID. I do want to make it clear, I'm not speaking on behalf of either of my institutions. Additionally, I'm the online editor for the Journal of the American Medical Association Otolaryngology with extensive experience in evaluating scientific studies. As a surgeon for over 13 years, masking was a regular part of my job even before the pandemic. Arguments have been made that masking causes oxygen carbon dioxide to reach unsafe levels. If this were true, no one could ever work in an operating room because we'd all be passing out or impaired. Yet, for well over 100 years, masked surgeons have provided safe, routine, excellent care. I myself have been masked for over 20 hours for surgical cases without passing out. In order to support non-masking, an often quoted, now retracted study from GMA Pediatrics looked at carbon dioxide buildup in children wearing masks. There are serious methodologic flaws with this study, which is why it was subsequently retracted by the journal. Bad science. As an ear, nose, and throat surgeon who specializes exclusively in the airway, I unfortunately now have the job of taking care of long COVID patients. Patients with permanent tracheostomies, chronic cough that does not respond to treatment, and unexplainable shortness of breath. Adults have primarily been the ones to develop long COVID symptoms because up until now, they have been the ones infected. However, the epidemiologic data is crystal clear. More children across the range of ages are being infected and most scientists expect that the incidence of post-COVID symptoms in children will grow. We all agree on how vital it is that our students are in person this next year. If there's any one area of agreement amongst all sides, it's that. The decision undertaken by the Board of Education, I highly support because it's going to be the best thing to keep as many of our children in school as possible. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Next up, we have Amanda Heideman.
Hello. My name is Amanda Heideman. I'm a board-certified family physician and a Parkway West parent. As an urgent care physician, I have had a bedside seat for the COVID-19 pandemic and diagnosed some of the first COVID patients in St. Louis. I've been wearing an N95 respirator mask for 12 to 14 hours per day since this started. I would like to reinforce the fact that masks work, especially when implemented as part of a broader mitigation strategy. In a typical flu season, I will see dozens of flu patients each day. Last season, I could count the number of patients I saw on one hand the entire season because it was five. Masks work to prevent the spread of respiratory droplets, which is why we have been using them in medicine for what's called source control for more than a century. They prevent sick patients from spreading disease. Data from well-validated sources confirms a decline in respiratory illnesses over the past year. In fact, influenza activity for the 2020-2021 season was lower than any year since data has been publicly available. Over the last several weeks, however, coinciding with reduced mask use, we have seen a substantial increase in respiratory illnesses, especially in children. Conditions which were largely nonexistent while everyone was masking and distancing, such as RSV. They are at high levels and we see an escalating positivity rate for COVID and an increasing proportion of cases in children. Some of these children are having significant complications from COVID, including heart disease, fatigue, difficulty concentrating, and decreased lung function. These children can no longer learn, play, or function as they did prior to COVID and their long-term consequences are unclear. I want to thank the Board for following the most current evidence-based recommendations, including those from the American Academy of Pediatrics in crafting its COVID strategy. These experts agree that masking, distancing, ventilation, and hygiene are the keys to keeping children in school while infections are at their current levels in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Lisa Ryan, followed by Kim Midiksov and Mandy Michelle.
My name is Dr. Lisa Ryan. I'm a proud parent of a recent Parkway graduate and I have two other children in the district. Further, I'm a Wash U community pediatrician with an office within district boundaries and I care for many Parkway students. I have been on the front lines of the COVID pandemic since it started and I want to applaud Parkway's current plans to keep our kids safe and to keep them in school. I'm especially pleased to see the district incurring vaccination of all eligible students. As COVID treatments are limited and long-term effects are still unknown, disease prevention via vaccine is crucial. Currently, the Pfizer mRNA vaccine is the only one available for children ages 12 and up. This vaccine was developed over the course of a year due to an unprecedented allocation of funding and resources through Operation Warp Speed. When it was time to start clinical trials, volunteers were easy to find, so recruitment did not take long. Further, the virus was circulating rapidly, so data was easy to collect. The Pfizer Phase III clinical trials started in July of 2020 and enrolled 43,000 participants. The trial results demonstrated a very safe vaccine with 94% efficacy. To date, more than 300 million people around the world have received the vaccine. Side effects are rare and the risk of illness far outweighs the risk of vaccine. The only true contraindication to vaccine is an allergy to a vaccine component. The vaccine works by providing the body with a blueprint for the COVID spike protein. Once these pieces are created, our body learns how to mount a robust immune response. This response will be called upon should the native virus ever be encountered. Physicians and scientists recommend vaccination for all individuals aged 12 and up. It does not matter how strong your immune system is. This is a new virus. There is no natural immunity against COVID. Even those who have been previously infected with COVID need to be vaccinated because the immune response created following infection is unreliable and not nearly as robust as that created by vaccine. Further, there's evidence that a natural immune response will not be protective against new variants. Thank you, Dr. Marty and the Parkway Board of Education, for taking the time to sift out misinformation and listen to experts. As a pediatrician, I firmly believe that the most important thing I can do to protect a child's health is to ensure she is fully vaccinated and the COVID vaccine is no different. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Kim Midiksov.
Good evening, Dr. Marty, President Todd, members of the Board, and Ms. Stover. My name is Kim Midiksov. I am not a physician. I am a Parkway parent and a former Parkway teacher of 18 years. I am also a scientist in the St. Louis area. Several times in the last few years, I have stood before you and I have made bold statements and had impassioned views. There were times we found common ground and other times we respectfully agreed to disagree. Tonight, I am here to say thank you. Thank you for making the decision to have all individuals wear masks in Parkway buildings when school starts. I know it is a decision that wasn't made lightly, but it is the only decision, though, that could be made in good conscience after examining the data, the viewpoints of scientists, the guidance from national health organizations, and the recommendations of the American Academy of Pediatrics, to name a few. I am here tonight as a loud voice of agreement and support. I wanted to be sure that the voices of parents opposing masks weren't the only ones you heard this evening. Please know there are many, many parents who agree with this decision and with the scientists and experts who know that masks are an effective tool at preventing the spread of COVID-19. I am hopeful that we will soon turn the corner on this deadly virus. Until then, thank you for holding strong for our teachers. Thank you for holding strong for our staff. And most importantly, thank you for holding strong for our children.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mandy Michelle, followed by Hallie Baker and Thalia Stein.
Hi, Dr. Marty and the Board. I'm not a doctor either. I just wanted to be a parent supporting the mask policy at Parkway. I have a seven-year-old and a 13-year-old in Parkway. They do Kung-Fu, cross-country, and soccer. They wear their masks even while playing sports. They do that by choice. They were thrilled to be back at school last year after the lockdown. They never once complained about their masks. They misbehave, but not in that way because they know how important masks are. The only mask complaint they have are about people, especially adults, who don't wear them or don't wear them properly. One friend of theirs is immune compromised and hasn't left the house during most of the pandemic. The people who won't mask and get their vaccines so we can bring the rates down are making it so that kids like that will never be able to leave the house because it won't be safe. Thank you, Board, for the mask mandate, mask policy in Parkway. And now I believe we also need a vaccine mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Thalia Stein.
Hello. I came tonight to thank the Board for requiring masks in schools. It's very hard nowadays to do the right thing and I really appreciate the courage to stand up for what is required and needed for the health of our children. The other topic I wanted to bring up is while we are all focused on COVID-19, there are other safety issues that we need to also consider. Mental health is at an all-time low as far as children and adults are concerned. Extremism is high. Mass shootings are at a record high already this year. And I'm wondering if the Board is thinking about how to make the buildings even more safe. I think about two years ago, we voted on a bond issue to make some changes to the buildings. I personally have not seen at Parkway Central high any kind of change such as a vestibule or other safety, safety measures to make the entry of somebody with a gun more difficult. I think this is a very important topic, even though we are dealing with COVID. As I said, mental health is not very, the state of mental health, especially for our children who have been through a very difficult time this past year, is to be considered. And I think it would be great if you could address this issue. I am talking mainly, I would love to see metal detectors at the entranceways and checking bags. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Next up, we have Deneen Preston. I'm sorry, Hallie Baker. I'm so sorry. Followed by Deneen Preston and Doug Stockenberg.
Okay, well, here's your opposition, guys. My name is Hallie Baker. I'm here to discuss my concerns over the mask mandates as a mother of three young boys in Parkway and as a licensed mental health provider. There are numerous studies indicating the detrimental effects of mask-wearing in children. And these, excuse me, in addition to these studies, the WHO and UNICEF state that children under five should not be required to wear masks. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous here. Even if we dismiss the efficacy arguments concerning mask-wearing, the serious mental health and developmental implications are dire. 93% of communication is understood to be nonverbal and of that, 55% or more of communication is delivered via facial expressions. Covering the faces of our children and their teachers is hindering their ability to learn healthy, nonverbal communication. In addition to the potential for social-emotional developmental delays, children are reporting an increase in anxiety, fatigue, irritability, and just not wanting to go to school. When I asked my first-grade son what he liked best about last year, he told me recess, snack, and lunch seems reasonable. I asked why? Because he could take his mask off. Our community has had access to vaccines and it's every adult's choice to determine what level they choose to participate in these safety guidelines. As parents, we can identify the threats to our children and determine based on that information how we protect them. Any policy that attempts to take that responsibility away from the parent is bureaucratic overreach. These organizations are not my child's parent. They do not seem to invest in mental health and do not have accountability for the detrimental actions they are taking. This policy is asking our children to incur unacceptable sacrifices and burdens to protect the adults in their lives. It's atrocious and abusive. Our job as parents is to provide, protect, and nurture our children, not request them to make sacrifices for the community. The decisions being made by this organization are not respecting the sacred duty of our, of parents and have forced me and many other families to reconsider if Parkway is our best option for the education of our children. I believe that masks should be voluntary for both children and staff and I thank you for your time.
We have Deneen Preston.
I am a parent of a Parkway West Middle School student and I'm here speaking for her and myself and everybody else who, there's been a lot of talk about choice tonight. Well, here's the other side of choice like we just heard. On August 2nd, I received a response to an email sent to Dr. Marty and the Board of Education voicing my preference to not require any student to mask while in school. The response contained a statement, and this is a direct quote, "But we have all students under 12 not vaccinated and the Delta variant and its impact on all of us, including those vaccinated, is worrisome." So I followed up with a response to that, asking for a direct explanation as to how Parkway, or anyone for that matter, is determining variant cases because I'm not aware that there's a test for that. I haven't heard anything about, factually, this is how we go about determining it. To that direct request, I received a response from the Parkway Director of Health Services, and again, this is a direct quote. "To my knowledge, there is currently no specific test for the Delta variant. From what I understand, they use information regarding symptoms as well as other factors, age, vaccination status, etc., of those who are testing positive to guide what variant may be circulating in a region. I have reached out to an epidemiologist in St. Louis County Health Department to get a clearer understanding of this process and I will share that information with you when I hear back," end quote. And to date, I still have not heard anything from her. I find it appalling that Parkway School District has deemed it acceptable to make a policy that affects thousands of students and their families based on unverified information. If my student were to turn in a research assignment or anything where she was asked to show her work, prove her hypothesis, and the answer was, "Well, I'm not sure, but you know, I heard from here that this might," she would not get a passing grade on that, you know, that assignment. Basically, that is not acceptable for an issue of this magnitude. You insult our intelligence and by what authority do you presume to tell us how to manage any medical decisions for our children? Your flimsy justifications undermine every parent's right and constitutional Your flimsy justifications undermine every parent's right and constitutional authority to make decisions for their own children. Stop interfering.
Way with the applause in between speakers. If you want to applaud, let's wait until everybody's finished and give them a nice round of applause. Next up is Doug Stockenberg.
Yes, I'm also here as a parent tonight to advocate for student choice against this ridiculous mask requirement. But first, let me tell you what I'm not going to say. I'm not going to discuss all the scientific studies that have previously been disclosed to this board showing that these flimsy masks do nothing to stop the spread of this microscopic virus. I will also not discuss the numerous studies that show and the numerous stories that have been relayed to you by parents of the numerous physical, emotional, and psychological consequences that mask-wearing this past year has impacted on our students. I'll also not discuss how 99.99-whatever percent of students who happen to get this virus recover. No, I'm not going to waste my breath on those things because we've provided this information, and it's clearly been disregarded. Instead, I'm here to make a promise, and that promise is I will not rest until every Parkway student has restored to him or her the most basic human right, and that is the right to breathe freely without being forced by the power of the state to wear these flimsy, soggy bacteria sponges on their face six to seven hours a day, every day, just to appease those who choose to live in constant fear of a virus with the 99.9-whatever percent survival rate in otherwise healthy people. Yes, I will use every means at my disposal until this policy is reversed and choice is given to parents. If these vaccines, if these masks are so effective, let the kids wear them. Let the faculty wear them. Let everybody wear them. But if they're so effective, then why are you having to mandate them? Let people choose whether it's, whether they want to wear them or not. Thank you.
Next up, we have Teri Zuber, followed by Kirsten Wheeler and Lauren Cash.
Good evening. My name is Teri Zuber, and I am here tonight to gain understanding into why the Parkway quarantine protocol is not universal for all staff and students. Once scientific studies were used to determine and justify the assorted quarantine protocols outlined in the August 9, 2021 email sent to families in the Parkway District, when responding, please provide the links or specific references to these studies. The current-outlined quarantine protocols are best arbitrary, at worst, a form of segregation and discrimination. As I have asked for supporting evidence from you, let me provide evidence for this statement. Your quarantine protocols currently treat vaccinated and unvaccinated differently and offers no reference to staff or students who built immunity following being COVID-positive. The protocols are not only contrary to science, it conflicts with the statements that came directly from the supporting documents you provided in your email. To quote the CDC website linked to the 9 August email, "Vaccines are highly effective against severe illness, but the Delta variant causes more infections and spreads faster than early forms of COVID-19 virus. If you are fully vaccinated and become infected, you can spread the virus to others." Let me stress a few words of that last sentence. If you are fully vaccinated, you can become infected, and you can spread the virus to others. The CDC website also states that if you have already recovered from COVID-19, it is possible that you could be infected with all the virus, the virus that causes COVID-19 again. The very website that you provided states emphatically that every person vaccinated, unvaccinated, naturally immune can all be infected and thus all transmit COVID-19 to others. This statement was confirmed tonight by many physicians who spoke here. So I ask, why has Parkway not established a universal protocol for all students and staff instead of implementing a protocol that segregates? The definition of segregation is the state or condition of being set apart, separated or restricted to one group, or also the institutional separation of an ethnic, racial, religious, or other minority group from the dominant majority. When all are at risk of all, of being infected and all are at risk of infecting others, using a different protocol for different groups is a form of segregation. The current quarantine protocols are not only unconstitutional, they directly violate the Civil Rights Act, they cross over the threshold in the religious discrimination for those who have not been vaccinated due to their beliefs, and violate the Genetic Information Nondiscrimination Act for those who are unable to get the vaccine due to medical reasons. The front of the building states, I'm almost done. Can I get my one-liner in?
I've let you go way over.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
We're going to move on to Kirsten Wheeler.
Hi, I'm Kirsten Wheeler, and I am the mother of two students in the Parkway School District, and I am here to say thank you. I'm here to say thank you for the courageous decisions that have been made to put our community first, and I really think that this is an issue about our whole community. I find it really interesting. I was trying to figure out what, remind myself, what the mission of Parkway School District is, and any good teacher could have told me to look up and use the context cues. And what I see right above me here is the mission of the Parkway School District is to ensure all students are capable, curious, caring, and confident learners, and a little bit more. To me, I just want to really talk about the word caring. When I think about the experiences my children have had in the school district, I'm so thankful. And when I think about dropping off kids in kindergarten and how scary that is as a parent and walking past the classroom, it always struck me as so fantastic how teachers and administrators, right, they create this idea of friends. I always loved hearing when teachers said, "Hey, friends, we're going down the hallway now. Hey, friends, find your partner. Take care of each other." And I think that that spirit of caring really extends onto this mask mandate. I am so thankful that neither of my children are immunocompromised. I am so thankful that they will get, they have gotten the full impact of the vaccines. Not every parent is so lucky. Not every child is so lucky. Not every grandparent who is living with them is so lucky. It is about a community, and by your bold decisions, you are making our entire community healthier, and I cannot thank you enough for your sacrifice.
Next up, we have Lauren Cash, followed by Abby Keen, Joanna Feiler, and Ryan Kerr.
Good evening. I am in opposition to the mask mandate. My name is Lauren Cash. I'm the mother of two in Parkway. I've been a mom of, in Parkway for 10 years, and I had a son. Well, I should say at first, I unenrolled my children in August of 2020 to homeschool them in light of what was going on in the world, and virtual was something that just did not work for either of my children. And so they are still unenrolled, and I would love to re-enroll them, but I just cannot do that. I have a son that had an IEP at Shenandoah. Last time he was in school, school was in second grade now. He's about to be in fourth grade. And he has problems. He's not medically diagnosed, but he's got issues with social cues and, you know, behavior, and he's got sensory issues. Masking my child with sensory issues is wrong. It's wrong. It's not something you can train out of them like they're a dog. Okay? He's got sensory issues. Actually, I have sensory issues, so he gets it from me. That's not something that just goes away. And not being able to see his peers and his teachers' faces and read the social cues, I don't understand why I should even keep him in school, which is why I didn't. I decided to take him out and homeschool him. And, you know, these kids have been mask-free all summer. They've been going out of state, even out of the country, without masks and with, on vacation with family. They've been to aquatic centers and sleepovers and movie theaters, not masked. And now we're going to ask them to sit down in class all day, do indoor PE all day without a mask on, and it's wrong. Parents should have a choice. I will never get the vaccine. My kids will never get the vaccine. I'm not against people that do choose to get the vaccine. I don't get the yearly, yes?
We're going to move on.
Thank you. I didn't even see the sign. Thank you.
Next up is Abby Keen.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Abby Keen. I have three children in the Parkway District. We've been a part of the Parkway District for six years, and we absolutely love it here. Before I start, I did write what I want to say, so I will give that to you. If I don't get to finish, if you guys could please read it, I would appreciate it. Instead, I would like to rebut a few things that have been said by the many doctors that spoke before. As much as I agree with some of what they've said, I would like to rebut the fact that, of course, the surgeon does not pass out because OSHA guidelines determine that there's oxygen pumped into surgical rooms, and he is fitted for the mask that he uses, day in and day out for his job. My child has never had the option to get fitted for a mask by anybody in our school district, and I do not believe that you're pumping in oxygen to those schoolrooms. The high levels of childhood respiratory illnesses that are going on right now, I am a pediatric chiropractor. I take care of children in my practice every day. I see them and their immune systems every day and help parents deal with common childhood ailments like respiratory illnesses without the uses of drugs or surgery. And I will say that part of this rise in respiratory illnesses is most likely due to the fact that we shut down our kids for 15 months, and their immune systems were not allowed to be exercised. Biodiversity is the, like, crux of life, and we need to be exposed to multiple pathogens in order to grow our immune system. Our innate masks that we've been given are our mucosal membranes in our nose, in our mouth, in our eyes, so that when we are exposed to these things, we can then have natural immunity. That's what it is for. And so for people who are choosing not to vaccinate, it's not because they're haters, it's because they understand this. And that is something that I am asking you all to come, just like the lady before. I, I'm not, I'm not going to fight the mask. Like, I wish you guys would just let people choose, but this is the most discriminatory thing I've seen in a long time. We chose Parkway because of the diversity and the way that you encourage our children to love people, no matter where they come from, their ethnicity, their backgrounds, their education, the teachers and staff in Parkway. I think that's at your core for what we stand for. This is not that. So please, recall this, and let's find something that bridges people together instead of representing hatred and division. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Joanna Feiler.
I'm standing here as a concerned mother. My daughter goes to Parkway West High, and she chose to be vaccinated. She's protected herself, and that's her job, and it's my job as her mom, to take care of her physical and her mental health. At this point, the vaccine has been widely available. If you, Parkway has had many clinics for their teachers, for students to choose to get vaccinated. Teachers chose to get vaccinated to protect themselves. So my question is, why is the school making students their responsibility to maintain the health of Parkway staff and other students if the vaccine is going to truly be the answer for everybody? I did email each of you an article that I read from the Wall Street Journal in regards to masking children. Some very, very valid points on making our children in school wear these masks, some things that they fog up glasses to make it difficult to see. Masks can cause severe acne and other skin conditions, and these are, these are very important things to students. We have to remember that in a child's mind, the discomfort of wearing masks distracts children from learning. The increased airway resistance can cause problems with them, just exhorting themselves in PE. Masks works in anxiety and breathing difficulties in some students. Importantly, facial expressions that are necessary for human connection, particularly in young children, covering faces, mute, nonverbal forms of communication, and this is especially important for children with disabilities. My daughter is one of them. She is hard-of-hearing, and it's very important that she sees facial expressions along with the lips movement to know what the person is saying. I believe masks should be optional, and I believe it should be the parent's choice to protect their children from COVID and any other illness that they're exposed to. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ryan Kerr.
You know, I wrote a lot of stuff down. I'm not going to, I'm not going to read that because of what I've heard tonight from other people. I want to correct a few things from physicians, and there was a couple other comments that were made. But the, when we talk about efficacy, I have a child that's starting kindergarten in the Parkway District. I worked five months of COVID units. I'm a vaccine research nurse. I vaccinated 390 people for the Moderna Phase III trial here in St. Louis. I won't tell you I'm against vaccines. I'll tell you I'm a vaccine skeptic, right? Because if we're not skeptical of what we do, we don't do our jobs correctly. We skew data. Data shouldn't be manipulated. It's raw. Raw data never lies, period. So I'll tell you, I always tell everyone, get vaccinated, right? But that's your choice. You should never be forced to do something, period. Some people don't need it. There are people that have had natural disease eight months ago. There are people that eight months ago, after they had natural disease, are still more immune than most vaccine people. Now, you can shake your head, but I'll tell you, I'm talking about myself. That's six, right now, at 642.2 on a reference range of 0.8 when we talk about antibodies, okay? I want to tell you, a normal vaccinated, fully vaccinated person is between 500 and 750. It makes sense, right? Now, as far as masks goes, let's talk about some data. St. Louis County has 111,161 cases of COVID in the last 18 months, 2,333 deaths, counting for 2% death rate. Jefferson County has never had a mask mandate, once, as 230,000 people, 25,896 cases, 264 deaths, or 1%. It's strange that a masked county versus a non-masked county would have that big of a difference. It just makes sense. Children aren't dying. We have 358 children that have died since this pandemic started. To put that in perspective, that's 0.05%.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr.
I appreciate the board members that responded to my email last night. Mr. Seltzer, shaking your head and laughing.
All right. As I mentioned, everyone who spoke will receive a response, and we appreciate all your comments tonight. Thank you. Next, may I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education as scheduled for August 11, 2021? So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Next regular board meeting will take place on Wednesday, September 1, 2021, beginning at 7:00 PM in the Parkway Welcome Center. Take a quick little break?
That's probably, yeah.
So right now, we'll take about a five-or-so-minute recess, and we'll be right back to resume. to resume. Okay, we are going to resume our meeting. Thank you all. We've already approved the agenda, so next up, we have a slightly modified agenda from what you may be used to seeing. Actually, looked at our outline before. We used to have an official board subcommittee report section, which we got a long time ago, got away from actually recognizing. So we've modified it a little bit. We've removed the word liaison reports, and now we're going to have what is 9.02, which is board superintendent reports, and that will encompass any subcommittee meeting feedback and reporting, as well as our traditional liaison reports. So but first, I will tell you that the next regular board meeting will take place on Wednesday, September 1st, 2021, beginning at 7:00 PM at the Parkway Welcome Center right here. So now, we'll go on to our new and improved board superintendent reports. So we'll start with Matt.
I do want to think I already came tonight for the next call here, right? Anymore, but I do appreciate the comments, and I just want to be very clear for myself. With the information we have right now, I fully support our masking policy. I do hope it's as temporary as possible, but then too, I am masking my daughter too with this process. And I think for right now, it's a greater good for our community, and it's a greater good for the region, and it's an important part that we need to play as a school district going forward. And then I'll just try to be positive. I am so glad the kids are coming back to be in school five days a week. I'm excited that my daughter is starting cross-country this week. I'm excited about our consent agenda tonight because we're actually going to vote for our graduation dates to be at Family Arena. So that hope is out there, and I do know we're not starting the school year the way we want to. We want to be back more to the normal, going back pre-COVID, but we have a few more steps to go, but I'm hopeful that we will be at Family Arena come May of 2022. Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to talk about, you know, I feel like over the summer, I focus more on being mom than being a board member. And as mom, my kids were still really involved in Parkway. My older son, who's in high school, did a couple of virtual classes. It was hard. It was, my son does not learn well virtually, and he's not an independent worker, so that was really tough. My other son did a cooking class through Parkway Rockwood and had a great time, went by choice masked the entire time, and actually said his entire class chose to mask. I found that very interesting. And then the non-virtual learner just finished band camp last week, and I cannot say how grateful I am that we are doing what it takes for my son to have a marching band season. They masked when they were inside, but they were outside a lot of the time practicing. They had a great time, and West is going to have a small but mighty marching band this year. I just feel like there was a lot of focus put on individual choice. We're a community, and in a time like a pandemic, which this is a time none of us have ever dealt with before, and this is hard. Everything about it is hard. But my personal philosophy, if you want to call it that, is that just about every decision we make affects people in our community. And I want my kids in school. I want all of our kids in school. And just as Matt said, I feel like I'm getting a little repetitive, but if the masks are what it takes for a while to have us in school, I think that's what we need to do. And I just am so excited for my kids. My second one gets to go in tomorrow to be a web leader, to do the orientation for the sixth graders. He's going into training tomorrow. And I just want them there together, and if it's wearing masks, it's wearing masks until we can get this under control. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Pam's family is an example of all the wonderful opportunities our students have in Parkway, not only during the school year, but obviously during the summer as well. But I just want to say thank you to everyone for their thoughtful comments and ideas and concerns and feeling of needs. We hear from so many people, and that's what Parkway is all about. During my tenure in Parkway for years and years, we always listened to parents, and parents were willing to share with us their viewpoints and their thoughts. And so much of what happens in terms of decisions basically comes from the direction that we often hear from parents, and we appreciate the comments. I've enjoyed reading the emails. Parents put so much thought and feeling into them, and just to take the time to write a rather lengthy email is very much appreciated. And then, of course, the comments tonight were very much appreciated as well. We understand the varying viewpoints, and that's understood. That's just the way it is, and we value their comments, whether they are for the masks or not for the masks, or for one thing or another thing, but it's very valuable to making this district a great district and making us all feel that we can help and support you all. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll start on the positive end. Obviously, a new school year starts in a few weeks. This will be the third school year that's been affected by this pandemic. And like my colleagues, I'm hopeful that this is the school year that's least impacted by it. My kids will start, all of our kids will start five days a week in a building, you know, with their friends and teachers and getting back to what we all remember as normal. But obviously, we need to talk about, you know, the subject that's been discussed tonight. I just want to, there was a woman who spoke who talked about the caring part of our mission statement, and she spoke far more eloquently than I could, but I really, I hadn't put those two thoughts together, and I really appreciate what she had to say because we're a community, and the caring is part of it. And, you know, personal choice is wonderful, and it's an important part of being an American and a citizen, but it's not the end of the discussion when you're part of a community. And as a district, I like that we're putting the emphasis on caring, and it's not easy. And, you know, wearing masks isn't fun, and no one likes it. For my own sake, I'd like to apologize because I did make some, I don't do great with nonverbals. It's between me and my face, and I'm working on it. When some people were talking, I made some expressions that probably weren't very respectful, and I apologize to those watching and those that were here. But I think, like a lot of us, I'm just getting frustrated with where we are. And what I could say to the parents that are here and the parents watching is, nobody wants to wear a mask, at least of all these kids. And if you want to get mad about it, you know, you can get mad, don't get mad at my faces, although I apologize for them, and don't get mad at the administration for making hard decisions. You know, get mad at your neighbors who won't get vaccinated, your family members, your friends, because that's why we're still having to do this, and it's unfortunate that it's on our kids.
I'll start with, just from a liaison report standpoint. One of the many things that a school board member needs to have responsibility over is incumbent upon us to keep educated on what the current legal aspects of education are. And thanks to our legal team with Tuukka Kini, they put on a law seminar every year, and our school district has participated in that every year. Several of us on the board attended four mornings worth of listening in on the legal aspects of education and some of the legislative issues, updates that are occurring, et cetera. And there's a lot going on out there, so there's a lot to keep up on so that we ensure that we all are maintaining the proper legal status that we need to have within our educational system. I'm going to, so that's my liaison report. On the matter of the masks, emotions are running high right now. We all can acknowledge that. But I want to share a real quick personal story, if you'll indulge me. My daughter, 13 years old, was unfortunately participating at the West, she was shopping at West County Mall on that unfortunate day where a shooting occurred. She was with her friend, another 13-year-old, along with her two younger sisters, seven-year-old twins, and their mother. So when the shooting, the shots rang out, my daughter and her friend looked at each other, and because of the intruder training that they got here in Parkway, they knew what to do. There was an exit, they got out, and as they were running out, there were other people outside in the bushes yelling to them, "Over here, come here, we got you. It's okay, you're safe here." And that's where they went. We are teaching more in Parkway besides just reading, writing, and math. We are teaching transferable life skills, and that's a perfect example. And I think this whole COVID situation is another example of how we need to exemplify coping skills in very difficult circumstances, not losing our cool, trying to listen to rational explanations. And I believe that that's what we have done and how we came to our conclusions, that masks for all, unvaccinated or vaccinated, teacher, student, or employee, everybody needs to wear a mask for the safety and health of all people. That's where caring comes in. So while you may disagree with the decision, I will ask you again, as I have asked you in the past, please respect the decision. We believe we're doing the right thing, and we just ask for your cooperation. You're coping with a very difficult situation, and please respect our decision. Thank you.
Thank you. I won't reiterate everything that everyone has said thus far, but I will echo the sentiments of many of my fellow board members. I will say I was very thankful and appreciative that we maintained a very, very respectful exchange tonight in hearing a wide variety of viewpoints, and I, like I said, I really appreciate that. We understand that people are passionate about their perspectives and their opinions, and it was nice to be able to hear those without interruption tonight. I would just like to, let's see, just thank a couple of people, or thank a couple of groups of people. One of the things we're about to approve in our consent agenda, I assume we're about to approve it, is a gift to the Henry School from the PTO. They raised a bunch of money, and they're going to put that money towards some new playground, playground surface material. It's something, it's a project that they've been working with Parkway Facilities folks for probably a year. with Parkway Facilities folks for probably a year. And it hasn't been easy through COVID and getting people out to bid it and getting the materials and everything, but it's finally coming to fruition. So I know there's some very happy people and ultimately happy kids at Henry. I will also echo Debbie's comments about the Tuukka Kini Law Seminars. They were great as always. This is, this, obviously, we were virtual this year, but it was still very informative and well-received. I've had the pleasure of being with some of our newest educators, 80-something new teachers in Parkway, both our traditional teachers and special educators, and it was great to see such young and shining faces in some seasons that have come from other districts, but it's great to see so many people wanting to be here in Parkway and sharing the gifts that they have with our students. I also got to meet several of our new administrators last month at an orientation to welcome them into the district, and we have some, just a few new principals this year, and it was really great to see some of those folks and hear how eager they are to make a difference in their respective buildings. So I look forward to getting to know all of them even better. And that's all I've got. Have you got anything to report on your new board-slash-supervisionary superintendent report?
Well, just a couple of things, and I, you know, board members, I have great reflection, and I think one of my takeaways tonight that some of you said is the ability that isn't true at all places of to be in a room and have people state passions and beliefs and what they know, but also to be respected. And so thank you, Jeff, for setting the stage for that, and all board members, and I salute the people that were here tonight. I have told the story over the summer. Oftentimes, people said, "Boy, it must have been a tough year this past year being a superintendent," and I'll say, "Well, true, it was a tough year, but in Parkway, we have," start with the board, "we have a board that has just worked so hard and trying to do the right thing. I have a wonderful team. We have great building principals. Pat McPartland's back there. I salute him and his teachers, all our staff who serve so many roles, from bus drivers to custodians, to name it, that we have here in Parkway. Jason, Technology Department, I gotta compliment them, but we have so many people. We have wonderful students who are so compliant and in a community that supports us. And so we've set, you know, the expectations for the school year, and it was true here tonight. We expect people to mask. We expect to take care of one another. As Kevin said, we think caring is important, and what we have set up tonight, we want to see, obviously, in the first day of school, and we expect that will happen. We will have our adults and our students wearing face coveries because that's the right thing to do at this moment. There was some disagreement, I'm sure, but at this point, we believe that's the right thing to do, and we appreciate the board's support. Jeff's made several compliments about out and about and meeting new people, and it was really exciting. And, you know, it's such a great time of the year. It's like New Year's, right? We're all coming back and celebrating a new year, and our new teachers, and everybody's pretty excited, and we have new administrators, as Jeff said, that are excited to be with us here in Parkway. I did attend the annual DESI, the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Conference at the Lake. I will tell you that it was interesting because I was probably in the minority, but I was masked the whole time I was there. And again, a great diversity of, but everybody got along, and we had a great, I was just there for the one day, but Patty Bedborough was there a little longer, but I'll tell you Patty and I were masked. And again, most of the St. Louis and Kansas City contingents were. But again, like a great learning experience for us. And I will just say that one of the things that I think you saw yesterday in a peach jar for announcement coming out of our Communications Department, and we're very, very excited about this, and we've started to see more and more of our new food service vendor that's going to join us this year, Chartwell's. We have had a wonderful food service program in Parkway, and you're going to see all those people continuing on, plus our management group. But Chartwell's gave us an opportunity to go to kind of a higher level, more purchasing power, more opportunity to share and communicate. We're going to have some food trucks. We're going to be able to do some extra things in the community, and most importantly, be conscious about nutrition and making parents and everyone aware of the nutritional value. So I want to thank Patty and Marlene Pfeiffer and that team that have been working with Chartwell's and their team to kick off the school year. I think we're going to really benefit, and we've had a lot of excitement even with our new teachers and the folks that have had a chance this week to take advantage of what Chartwell's can do. So I think I've hit the high points, and again, Jeff, great job in facilitating the discussion tonight as usual.
Thank you. And Dr. Marty mentioned bus drivers. I will just throw out there that we are looking for bus drivers. We are looking for food service workers. We're looking for before and after-school care workers as well. And if you know anyone, if anybody is listening or watching and knows anyone that would like to work in Parkway, which has been one of the, what, the last eight years, voted one of the top workplaces in St. Louis, we'd love to interview you. Next up, we will approve our consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the August 11th, 2021 board materials?
So moved.
Second.
Is there anything to be pulled to action or closed? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries 6-0. Next up, we have a little policy review. So we'll turn things over to Dr. Marty to present the policy review.
Yes, we often bring board policies for updates to the board, but tonight, we're going to start, which we hope will be true of many of the meetings this year, approving entire sections of changes that we've been engaged in. Let me just say Parkway has been working and engaged in updating and aligning our board policies with the Missouri School Board Association, MSBA, for the last, believe it or not, seven years. It's been a long and tedious process that is winding down and will hopefully conclude this year. Once we have completed updating all sections, and again, we've been doing that through our leaders, our SAT members, Action Team members working in their specific areas along with board committees, but once this is aligned, we will be able then to work with MSBA on a continually basis, and that required changes that we have to make to our policies, which usually result from legislation at the federal and the state level or court decisions, from the Supreme Court to the state court, which causes to change policy. Without somebody kind of helping us with that, oftentimes, we can easily make some mistakes, and we're not aligned like we should be. So once we're all aligned, we will have the ability to make sure our policies are updated. And Ms. Stover will probably be most working with that to make sure that those, any changes we have to make to the policy will immediately come to the board, working with, again, administration and working with any changes that we need to make as a result of legislation or court decisions. Tonight, we're bringing you Section C, which is the General School Administration. So I know the board has reviewed that. We've sent it to you. After this first read, we'll ask for approval of the entire Section C at the September 1st board meeting, and then we'll continue to bring you section by section of the board policies. Again, I want to thank the board who has worked, both present board members and those that have since left the board over the seven years, have worked on this process. I want to thank the superintendent's Action Team members. I want to thank MSBA for their patience with us and working with us. I also want to thank Paul Tandy and the folks in the Communication Department have worked with MSBA, and now Nikki, to really make sure that this has been a kind of seamless process, that we're kind of excited, again, to wrap up this school year. So again, first read on Section C, the General School Administration.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next up, we have a report. It is on the federal funds update, so we will bring forth Patty Bedborough, our CFO, to share a little bit of information.
Good evening, everyone. So I have really exciting news to share with you. So as you know, throughout the past several months, we have received many different, I will say, avenues of federal stimulus dollars. Our most recent award is with ESER III dollars from the American Relief Act, our American Relief Plan, sorry about that. It was approved by Congress and signed by the President in March of this past year. That guidance was provided in May for our school districts, May 24th specifically, from DESI, and we have some certain criteria that needs to be taken care of within a 90-day period. So you'll hear deadlines that we had on June 23rd, and then our upcoming deadline is August 23rd. So the reason why the 23rd, it's the 90 days from May 24th. So our award is $11,897,669. I mean, it's exciting. It's once-in-a-generation funding that we are receiving, and it comes with 14 allowable activities. We do have a requirement that 20% of this funding needs to go directly to learning loss for our children. So these other new requirements include obtaining feedback. So tonight, I'm going to go through some of our survey results that we did over the summer. Not an ideal time, of course, to survey our staff, our students, or our parents, but you will find that we did have substantial return from our survey. And I'm presenting it to you tonight, just in case you have additional feedback that you would like to share with us before we put the final touches on the plan and submit that to DESI for their approval. So the application is due August 23rd, so in two weeks, but the spending and budget updates we can make through September of 2024. So we do have a three-year period in order to spend this funding. We do have required posting of our return-to-learn plan, and we did obtain our first level of review approval of that yesterday from our area supervisor from DESI. So as I mentioned, this is just one of the forms of the federal stimulus money that we have received, but with it, we wanted to, it has requirements that we publicly share this information. So first, I want to talk about our administrative team that we developed in order to develop and make the plans for the spending of the ESER funds. So normally, with federal programs, we have Bill Bass, which is our Coordinator of Library Services and federal programs, along with Brian Whittle, which is our Director of Finance, that usually take care of all of the administrative and financial components of our federal programming. With this being a larger allotment of money, one-time money, both Kevin Beckner, Dr. Beckner, and myself became involved, and we have called ourselves essentially the administrative team that have kind of taken over the review requirements, going through all of the recommendations, all the requirements that we have to do. And then from there, we created surveys that go out to our staff, our students, and parents, asking for the necessary input. We created a template then for administrators to give us ideas and suggestions on some of the spending for the ESER funds. We shared all the information then with SAT, not only our process in the beginning, but then we also shared our suggested expenses, and now tonight, we're sharing them with you, of course. Know that we also, as a side note, we worked with the CIAT team, so part of the PNEA leadership in their Health and Safety Committee, to develop some of the plans that we'll be presenting that qualify for the indoor air quality suggestions as well. So first, I want to start with our responses from our students. So the survey was sent to our high school students. We received 414 responses, so certainly not a huge amount of responses, but knowing that the survey went out after school had ended. So quantitatively, we could tell you that everything was important, so low importance scored very, very low. But if we look at, from the student perspective, what were the things on an average weighted basis that scored the highest? And that would be addressing mental health, and then, of course, supporting the disadvantaged students as well. But right behind that is everything addressing learning loss as well. When we look at the staff responses, we received 924 responses in total from staff. That's almost a third of our staff responding. We had certified staff members, 690, 62 administrators, and 219 support staff responding. So of the respondents, we know that it was almost neck-and-neck tie on your average-weighted average of addressing mental health and addressing learning loss. So we know that they find those both very, very important and where we should focus some of our time and our money. On our parent responses, we received 2,907 responses. So of the parent responses, first comes, looks pretty obvious, is addressing learning loss and their concerns, and then second comes, of course, addressing mental health issues. The responses from these surveys helped us to develop priorities then in our spending as well. Along with the survey, we did have components where they could share comments, and I wanted to break down for you some of the number of the responses. As you can tell, there were more responses from the parent group, but there was more respondents to the parent survey as well. So certainly, they had lots of comments on addressing learning loss, several on mental health needs, but you'll see that there are 117 in the other category. If we broke that down further, one of the main components was asking for free meals, so free lunch and breakfast. Could that possibly continue for another year? So of course, it's with great happiness that we could say, yes, the government has passed that in this next year, through June 30th of 2022, we will still have free breakfast and free lunches for all students. So looking at the allocation of funds. So as I mentioned, we developed a process. We also had criteria, which we'll go into. We developed a form that administrators could complete and then provide to us ideas for the allocation of the funds. We reviewed all of the ideas submitted, and we applied evaluation criteria by the admin team, so Dr. Beckner, Bill Bass, Brian Whittle, and myself. Once we graded those and scored based on the evaluation, we shared that also with SAT as well. So our evaluation criteria, first and foremost, we wanted to make sure that it was connected to district-wide initiatives. One of the components that goes along with the spending of the funds is it needs to show equally distributed between your buildings and such. So of course, connecting it to district-wide initiatives is also very, very important. We cannot have recurring expenses that provide, that didn't provide support for the expenditures following FY 2024. So just simply hiring of staff and not having a plan for how we were going to pay for them past 2024, or were they going to be hired just for a specific period of time? So that needed to be outlined in all their plans. We wanted to make sure that they provided connection to the allowable activities. So we summarized, as you could see in the previous slides, the 14 allowable activities into, I believe it was six components, to make it easier, but we asked those administrators to then provide that connectivity to the actual allowable activity. And then, of course, the question, does it help to address learning loss? We scored these submissions, and I will say, based on everything that we scored, the things that made the cut essentially are looking at response to COVID. So any PPE that's not covered by our other federal plans, our federal stimulus money certainly would be applicable to ESER III. We have water bottle fillers, so currently, we do have some older drinking fountains throughout the district that are only for drinking water and don't have the bottle filler, so we have an allocation in there that would allow all of those drinking fountains to be converted to water bottle fillers. And then, of course, rental of instruments, so that students did not have to share instruments, especially those that you, you know, such as trumpets, et cetera, flutes, and then bell covers and virtual labs for some of our science programs as well. When we look at addressing learning loss, certainly, we've come up with some assessment pilots, some TLA supports to help with addressing learning loss. And then also summer school for not only this past summer school, but then the three future summer schools as well. One of the reasons that we have put summer school in there is that we do have a lot of local funding that goes toward our summer school. Certainly, it is normally supported by state funding. We will not collect the state funding on that summer school. We will instead choose to have that federally funded. We can have more robust summer school with that. And then, as we go further into it, if we find that we have specific needs for children that just summer school isn't addressing, we could perhaps then pivot, have summer school locally funded, and then provide the supports that are needed for students as that is identified on an individual basis. Supporting disadvantaged students, we have a recommendation for RAS Plus that supports ELL students and teachers. For increasing technology access, Chromebooks are listed specifically in the federal allowable expenses. So that is something we can have go against this expense. And then we also have heart rate monitors for our PE classes. Specifically, addressing mental health needs, we have suggested an enhancement of our Alive and Well program, and then also taking care of the addition of our care coordinators. So our plan has been for the increase in those care coordinators, and we could then pay for them the first three years with the federal funding. And then, last but not least, is our improvement of indoor air quality. So specifically, in the approved allowable expenses, our improvement in filters. So right now, district-wide, we're pretty much using MERV 8s. This would be increasing them to MERV 11s and MERV 13s where the airflow allows for us to do so. And then currently, we're testing bipolar ionization on two HVAC systems, both at the admin office and at the operations building. If those both test that they are cleaning the air better than the pre-test, then our suggestion will be to move forward with that district-wide. If those tests came back and it's relatively neutral on the ability to clean the air, then our suggestion is going with another allowable expense that will also help with our HVAC, and that would be enhancing our HVAC controls. So once again, a lot of these would be expenditures that would not be immediate, but would be over time. All the guidance allows that we can make budget adjustments and move. So it's important that we put in a plan. But we do have the ability, once we find other deficits, that we could move and pivot and be able to provide for students on what they need. So at this point in time, I'm here, if you have any questions. I know I had sent a board letter as well, giving the overview and such, and just wondering if you had any comments, suggestions, any feedback?
Anyone have any questions or feedback? I actually will ask you a couple of questions. On your approved list that you've come up with, the care coordinators, you were talking about that money would go to support those. Are those existing care coordinators for an additional length of time? Or are you talking about bringing in new additional care coordinators on top of what we already have?
That is an excellent question. So that was the exact same question that I had asked Dr. Matheson when he submitted that. So it would actually be paying for our already planned care coordinator. So it's a total of 14 care coordinators, correct? Nine. Yeah, so I think, was it nine? It was nine, sorry, the nine care coordinators. And then essentially, right now, they're budgeted, right, in our operating budget, but allow that budget then to be saved to our fund balances. So either in operating or move that to capital projects. And then, the way that it would be supported ongoing is that, especially if we continue to budget as if they're there, then it would carry on into the future because we have already allocated those funds to go toward mental health supports.
Okay. Then one other question, I know, I don't want to take away from any of the other categories because they're all important, obviously. But given that mental health and learning loss are our two top identified areas based on our survey feedback, I would like to see a little bit more weight thrown towards mental health. I know you only listed two things, augmenting the Alive and Well, and then, of course, the care coordinators. But, you know, given that that's one of the top things, I think that probably should get a good chunk of the money as well.
Excellent. And I believe that is our plan truly in the future, to be able to come up with more solid plans that will have direct impact for our students as well. One of the reasons that we put the Chromebooks into the plan, because, of course, they're already in our operating budget as well, was more as a place saver as well. So that if there was a budget that we needed to move from and then put it into addressing learning loss, helping disadvantaged students or mental health needs, we could easily move funds from the Chromebooks as well.
Okay, thank you.
I will ask one more follow-up question if I could. How long do the ESER funds stay in funding these particular things that we're talking about? And then, what is the plan to try to continue to fund them after ESER funds are no longer available?
So certainly, we can hit some of the big items, right? So first, how long is this funding in place? So we have different ESER funds that have different deadlines. So SR2 deadlines is through September of 2023. What we're talking about specifically here are SR3 funds or from the American Recovery Plan. These are spendable currently through 2024, so September of 2024. So that's a three-year additional period. We can go back and we can ask for any expense from March 20th of 2020 going forward to, and recap this. So, but right now, we're just looking at moving forward with the expenses and not going backward and pulling. So there's a couple layers that make it complicated. So right now, the state of Missouri hasn't allocated for us to spend any of our SR3 dollars yet. So they do have to give us allocation funding. So we can still spend, and it would still be reimbursed. It may just be delayed based on that. So going into the next question was, how would we recover from this? So certainly, some of our big items, summer school. Well, traditionally, we have always picked up summer school. We've paid that out of our operating expenses. It's been, you know, a net expense where it's a greater cost for the district than the revenue that we receive from state funding. So certainly, as we build in those future budgets, we would build the budget so that, you know, we would build back that cost again. As far as the care coordinators, that's the same situation there as well, where right now, it's budgeted in our operating expenses. There are some things that, right now, that would help to increase our fund balances because we would be saving those dollars and essentially having a place saver so that it does continue to be budgeted in the future as well. Items such as the improved air filters and the bipolar ionization, those are more one-time expenses. Certainly, we would look at the improved air filters and see if that is something that we want to include on an ongoing basis. Following COVID, if they were effective, if there was much of a change, et cetera, we would evaluate that. Some of the other programs that we have suggested really are directly related more to COVID, so would not necessarily continue, such as the rental of the instruments, the bell covers, the virtual labs, et cetera. The same thing, I would say, applies to the heart rate monitors for PE classes, for virtual PE classes. Once we have them, we have them. And with the water bottle fillers as well. So some of these are one-time expenses. Some would be directly related to the situation that we're in with COVID, and then some, we would then utilize with operating funds.
Thank you.
Patty, I think one of the things that is really different about this round of federal dollars, unlike other, you know, title allotments we get, is that we can supplant, which is quite different. In other, you know, federal money, you can't say we're going to, you know, supplant, meaning we're going to replace. And so what the strategy is, is that we don't want to get in a situation where we support summer school and then down the road, we can support it. We're going to basically, like you say, put some monies in fund balance and certainly think about our future. So we're not going to compromise our future, I guess, is the point I think we're trying to make here, right?
Correct. That is absolutely correct. You know, so, and we can discuss further how we would deal with some of those savings that we would have because we are kind of replacing some operating expenses for the federal dollars. But certainly, we know that we have a lot of capital project needs as well. So we are allowed to make some transfers into our capital projects fund. But we need to be very conscious that it's not extra dollars that go on forever. It just is a three-year period of that additional savings that would be helpful for the budget.
Now, Patty, you mentioned that some of these will take some time to implement. What about the mental health and the, just working with mental health issues and learning loss? I mean, we had a summer program that I understand went very well in helping kids. So what about the start of the school year with mental health assistance as well as learning loss?
So I can speak directly to the care coordinators. They are all hired currently, so we should be ready to go with them. Implementation of Alive and Well, I'm looking at Dr. Matheson to kind of give a guide as far as, you know, timing of that.
Sure, yeah, Dr. Sorrentino, thank you for that question. As far as mental health, obviously, is a big piece of, as we're coming back into school in person, things that our team and student services are working on, our school counselors, district counselors, social workers. We have our social, emotional behaviorists, care coordinators. I know that's a lot of titles, but a lot of places where we're able to help and support our kids in need, especially in the care coordinator position this year, we're adding nine positions at the elementary. We had three area coordinators for the elementary. We added six more positions to make nine. So one care coordinator is going to work with two elementary schools. We have a care coordinator also at every middle school and a care coordinator at every high school. And that's for those tier three, those highest need students and families. And so one of the big things they're going to be doing is trying to assess where students are and see what needs that they have at the moment. And sometimes, they may be the conduit to getting them into certain positions to help with therapy or getting them some counseling or checking in with the family, getting a social worker involved if there's other needs that those students or those families need. The best thing is that kids are coming into schools, that we can have eyes on them and have those conversations so that we can help them. So that's a position that we've, over the last two years, have continuously added to that care coordinator position. It's been very successful at the high schools and middle schools. So it's nice to see the younger students also have that same support. And there's also other areas. I know, Mr. Todd, you asked the question about the mental health and other things on this list. This is not an exhaustive list, of course, of what we're doing to help with the mental health. And we've, you know, we've talked a little bit about a mental health screener pilot and working with another group called Care and Counseling, to where we can also then be more proactive with our students. And when we start to see things that we're able to get them the help and supports immediately, because it's hard to teach students when they're having other struggles within their life. And in many ways, that's one of the most important things, is that caring piece, is how do we ensure their safety and well-being?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Dr. Matheson, I just want to, in case anybody's tuning in here, we don't want to forget our Virtual Academy, right? We're supporting students.
Oh, yeah, thank you very much. No, that's not a side note, and I appreciate you bringing that up. Those supports, all the supports I listed are not just for in-person. They're also supports for our students in virtual campus, for sure. Thank you.
And I can't help but say, we were very pleased, I don't know, I think we've let the board know, but we got a major grant from the Children's Fund to support the screener. We piloted and will continue. So that's not part of ESER, that was just part of our local Children's, St. Louis County Children's Fund.
Correct, that's right, yep, to help with that, for sure.
Thank you very much.
All right, so then, the other part of your question was summer school and then dealing with learning loss. And I'm looking at Dr. Beckner because he, of course, can speak to that much better than I can.
Well, thank you very much again for your question. We know, because we've all been watching the data and looking at it, where we have gaps and things that we need to, you know, continue to support our students on as we come back to the school year. So our teams are doing a lot of individual problem solving for students, and that means looking at not just sort of overall, how did kids do? Because as I've shared with this group many times, the story of our pandemic largely was kids who were doing well before the pandemic continued to largely do well. And students who were struggling prior to the pandemic seemed to struggle increasingly and to a greater degree than other students. So all of our school teams are engaged in progress monitoring intervention. We did add some tools through the ESER funds to help with this. So for example, reading A to Z is a tool that we added that we're going to continue funding. We are piling a couple other programs, both on the assessment side, NWEA, and on what we would call the progress monitoring side with a tool called Panorama that we'll be using here at South Middle. But bottom line is, we need to identify individual students, not just groups of students, not overall. And so that's what our school teams are going to be doing, especially at the beginning of the year. We hit the ground running with numerous assessments. I think it was last month, if I remember correctly, at this meeting, you approved the comprehensive assessment plan that Carter Snow presented, and that includes a lot of universal screenings at the beginning of the year so we can find those students and then put in interventions to support those students. We also added things like, we've made sure we have reading interventionists and math support for our students in virtual campus as well as in all of our schools so that we can make sure we're providing that academic support for kids as we find that they might have gaps.
Do all the elementary schools have at least one reading specialist?
Yes, they do. And we have some schools that are title-funded that have additional reading specialists as well.
Any other questions?
Okay.
We appreciate your feedback.
All right. Last item on our agenda is a program evaluation report from Dr. Jennifer Stanfield, who's been patiently waiting tucked back there in the corner all night. So thank you. Welcome.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, President Todd, Vice President Hopper, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Marty, Mrs. Stover, and guests. Tonight, I'll be providing a brief overview of the SPARC targeted evaluation, which is one of Parkway's choice programs. I'll begin by providing an overview of choice programs in Parkway, followed by a brief history of the SPARC program. We'll discuss the purpose of the targeted evaluation and the process that will be utilized. And at the conclusion, I'll invite you to provide any input, feedback, or ask any questions that you'd like to share related to the evaluation of the program. Need to grab the clicker. Choice Programs offers students in Parkway a variety of opportunities which allow them to pursue a personal direction by providing access to high-quality educational experiences outside of the walls and/or traditional calendar. You all may have remembered receiving a board memo in June, providing a summary of the current work in each of the six choice programs that are listed here. As previously mentioned, tonight's presentation is going to focus solely on that targeted evaluation of our SPARC program. But as you can see, we've got our Early College Program, which you learned about a couple of months ago as well, virtual campus, the Missouri Course Access Program, which is also virtual learning through third-party providers, our Fern Ridge and Missouri Options Programs, and of course, summer school. During the 2013-2014 school year, Parkway initiated an experiential learning task force comprised of business leaders, teachers, administrators, and parents. This task force visited the Blue Valley Center for Advanced Professional Studies, otherwise known as Blue Valley CAPS, in November of 2013, which had great impact on the in November of 2013, which had great impact on the group's final recommendations. As a result of the work of that experiential learning task force, a recommendation was made that Parkway would create dynamic, a dynamic immersion-based student learning experience to ensure students could understand and respond to the challenges of an ever-changing world. To accomplish this task, we would actively engage and work collaboratively with business partners, community service, and educational leaders to design and develop mutually beneficial experiences based not only on the interests of our students, but also on the needs of our stakeholders. The Spark incubator launched in 2014, 2015 with just 19 students at a time when profession-based learning programs were on the rise. This growth inspired the creation of the CAPS network, which is dedicated to creating rich and meaningful experiences for students and business partners across the nation as well as internationally. Because of our involvement and support of the Blue Valley CAPS program, Parkway Spark was named an inaugural member of the CAPS network in the summer of 2015. And we continue to be members and engage with them regularly. Since its inception, program strands aligned to high-wage, high-demand industries have been added, ultimately growing the program from 19 students in 2014-15 to 227 students in 21-22, including 17 students from the Rockwood School District. Students apply for the Spark program each winter and they're made aware of the program through conversations with counselors and teachers, information nights, electronic communications, meeting with Spark directors. And I can confidently say now, as we're, you know, five-plus years in, we're starting to really just see it spread by word of mouth. It's kind of part of the Parkway fabric and, and, and community and culture. And people know it and they look forward to taking part in it. So we're really excited about that. So throughout these past seven years, program directors have been gathering data from both students and industry stakeholders to assist in the development of the program. As we onboard two new program directors this year and see a number of our participants now kind of entering the workforce beyond both high school and college graduation, we determined it's time to take an in-depth look at the program and make recommendations for its future growth and development. So the purpose and goals of this evaluation are twofold. We want to review longitudinal data to identify areas of strengths and areas for improvement. And we want to make recommendations for future growth and program development, particularly related to growing the partnership and strengthening the partnership with the Rockwood School District with, which went into place last year. The target date of completion for the evaluation is February of 2022. So the evaluation process will be completed by our team of Spark program directors, Rockwood personnel, Spark alumni, and industry champions will continue to provide input and analyze data regarding the Spark student experience. As part of the process, we will be providing multiple opportunities to, to review that data and seek input and feedback from others regarding the Spark student experience. Our input process will be comprised of three specific components. First, we'll be reviewing our senior exit survey data as well as our CAPS network survey data that students have submitted with regard to their Spark experience. And this will really help us to identify areas of strengths and opportunities for improvement. Second, we will invite stakeholders to participate in focus groups. These stakeholder groups will include parents, alumni, industry members, Rockwood personnel, university professionals, and others who have had experiences either participating in Spark, working with Spark, or having children who have participated in Spark. Finally, after developing draft recommendations, we'll be inviting those stakeholders to provide input and hear feedback regarding proposals for moving forward. So our timeline begins with an initial meeting of Spark program directors next week in August to identify our evaluation team members, followed by an initial meeting of the team, data analysis, and focus groups. As a result of the data gathered through these activities, recommendations will be drafted and shared with the team. After finalizing the recommendations, I will be following up with you all through a board memo, which will, which will provide a report of our findings and our evaluation. So at this time, I would invite you all to ask any questions or provide any feedback regarding the evaluation for Spark.
As a parent of a Spark alumni, I'm curious, how do you follow up with your alumni? I'd be curious, whenever, I'd love to see at the end of this is how many followed through? I'll say my daughter's still on track. She'll be a positive one. But I'm curious to learn then, how many do follow through with the category that they started in?
Right. So we, we do, when the students leave us, well, first of all, I thought you were going to say that you wanted to be on the focus group as a parent, which I might hit you up for that. But no, we, when students leave in their exit survey, we ask for a personal email address and their cell phone number very intentionally, because if not, it's really difficult to get ahold of them. And so we also ask them if they would want to be involved with the, with a Spark kind of alumni network. And that's an area I think we have as of growth moving forward. Over the years though, we've invited students back. A lot of times, it used to be that they were still home when we started school. So they would come in and sometimes even like do the orientation for the program directors at the start of the school year. Now it's kind of flipped. But many of them are still very engaged. And if I asked my program directors tomorrow, I need five alumni who could come in and provide feedback. They would all probably say, oh, well, so-and-so just reached out to me on LinkedIn. This one just texted me and said they got a new job. And so, you know, I think most of it is through the program directors. I mean, they just build really incredible relationships because those kids are in that like element of, you know, where they're doing what they love and they're so motivated. And so they really seek continued feedback. And so I think that's, you know, probably our best, our best bet. I don't anticipate we'll have a lot of problems identifying folks to get involved.
Jennifer, did I, did I, I'm sorry, but did you talk about the, what you're going to do to survey the mentors and the people that are working with our students? Did I?
So we'll be working, once we bring our evaluation team together, that's when we'll start looking at what do we want to know from our mentors?
Okay.
Because one of the questions that I would have for our mentors is how many of them also remain in contact in terms of, you know, working with those students beyond? So I can think very specifically, many of you were here the first year and the popcorn girls, the popcorn straw girls gained a lot of notoriety, right? And so Tony Spielberg was one of our mentors, later became CEO of Boone Center. And then one of our, one of our girls, Marissa Hack, or I'm sorry, Annalise Frazika actually went and then worked for him for a while before he switched jobs. So, I mean, we have students that are continuing to reach back and/or coming in and getting coached on interviews. Our teaching and learning students, a lot of them have been coming back, getting coached on interviews because they're interviewing for TA or teaching positions in Parkway and beyond, which is exciting as well.
Will your evaluation cover the recruitment of students and how students and/or how students are identified to go into any particular Spark program?
I'm writing this down because if I don't write it down, I'll forget. We will, so we have been watching and really focusing on diversifying our Spark kind of cohort of students across all strands. I don't know that, I do believe we asked students in that survey data about how they've learned about Spark. And so I'll have to look at those questions to see if we have that data. If not, we might have to tease that out through the focus groups. With those being exit surveys, a lot of them, it's kind of like after the fact, asking them about their experience. But I do think that's a, an interesting, you know, an interesting thing that we would want to look at. And particularly after last year, when we were really worried about our numbers of students because all of our, our methods for reaching students to talk about Spark were not really possible, right? We weren't going into schools. We weren't in counseling departments. But we had more applicants last year than ever before. So also trying to kind of leverage some of those online options where parents could watch videos and ask questions electronically and get responses in 24 to 36 hours. Like I think that made quite a difference as well.
I also wonder if there's consideration in the evaluation to look at, as my understanding is currently Spark programs are only available to juniors and seniors. And if there's a way to trickle that down to earlier grades. As students are trying to do career exploration and how they're going about doing that, and would it make sense to consider students as freshmen or sophomores even, being able to take some of those opportunities to evaluate if that's something they would truly want to do in, in their, in their career exploration?
Yes. I think, you know, a good, largely we, we limit it to juniors and seniors because then they have a little bit more room in their schedule. And in fact, we have many more seniors than even juniors because junior year tends to be a pretty packed year. And then also because it's off-campus, a lot of those students can provide their own transportation. But we have been working and some of our program directors, they all kind of have different approaches in working with other folks. But, you know, that's one of the reasons a lot of times, like we have our Spark teaching and learning in our K-12 schools. And we've got our, our bioscience kids before have gone into science classrooms, like middle school science classrooms and conducted labs. And so really trying to introduce students to that, but maybe being more intentional about providing experiences for our ninth and 10th grade learners. That would be a really interesting way to look at it and to see what our other, you know, CAPS network counterparts are doing in those areas.
Thank you.
Anyone have any further questions?
I don't have a question, but I'll just say I've always been impressed with the Spark program. I have no idea how you can make it better, but I'm eager to find out how.
We'll see. You can always make it better, right?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Jennifer, while you're, while we have you captured, do you want to just tell us where, are we going to be back at the sites or are we going to be pretty much at the mall, the Spark facility, the mall?
Bioscience is back at Bridge Park this year.
Okay.
We are right now, you know, obviously working with our hospital partners. We don't go in the hospitals till second semester anyway.
Yeah.
They're feeling a little leery for obvious reasons. And so, you know, we'll continue to just be very transparent with our families about that. Sports medicine continues to meet at the Lindenwood Westport, but they are out on mostly Parkway athletic fields pretty much every single day, shadowing our sports medicine students are. And so engineering and tech and incubator will remain at the mall. Tech used to be at Maryville. The, this is a good problem to have, I guess, but Drew McAllister is the new program director. His numbers are so large that we wouldn't fit where we used to fit at Maryville. So we'll have to work with them to see if there's a larger space perhaps. But that, you know, we have some strands that have 40-plus students, you know, spread over two sections. So, which is great. You know, our goal was always 30 to 36. So when we're up at 45, that's a good problem to have.
You know, if I could just, one, one of the things that Jennifer over the years, if, if, if I would have been pushing, I kept saying, we gotta do more, gotta do more. And to her credit, and I mean this sincerely, Jennifer has said, we're not going to start a program until it's, you know, we've, we've worked with the industry leaders to, to establish it. We got good goals and we know it's going to be sustainable. If you think about it, every one of the strands has been sustained. So I just want to say, luckily I wasn't leading Spark. We had Jennifer who was wise and, and really did a great job of pulling industry and has been, has been able to sustain it and grow it. So I just want to thank you, Jennifer. You've been a, certainly a leader and you've certainly just, I mean, you talk about that growth of those numbers, it's just amazing.
Yeah. Yes, we were very, very excited. And we have just assembled a stellar team. I mean, the, our seven program directors work so closely together. That was one, you know, blessing last year was that we were able to really collaborate a lot more and a lot more efficiently. And so I feel like we've just, that, that whole team dynamic and them all working to a common goal for all of our kids, and then being able to go translate that into their individual strands has been really amazing. So we look forward to this year.
Hopefully, hopefully we might get the board, because we're, we actually have a new facility at the mall now. So we're, we have a new, and hopefully maybe sometime during this year, we could get back there with the board and have a little bit, because it's a great facility.
Yes. Yeah.
It's neat.
For sure. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We have no special meeting, so we will adjourn. May I have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
Submit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you all for attending.